Now I am unmuted. Hey, good morning. It is Tuesday, May 4th. It's actually my sister's birthday today. Twenty twenty-one supervisors, Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willing. Our auditor, Lisa Smith, our administrative assistant, Ben Goke, and our first appointment this morning is, as usual, is David Dryer, Jackson County engineer. Morning, David.
Eight permits for you to stay. A few additional things. First permit is for McCoke Valley Electric for Ninety-fourth Street in Iowa Township.
Can we do all the McCoke Valley's in one motion, Lisa, and then the Windstream in the separate?
Yes.
Okay.
Go through all of them.
Okay.
And address.
Yeah.
Ninety-fourth Street, Iowa Township, from Highway fifty-two to the end of the road, installing fiber optic cable on the right away. We recommend approval of that application. Another one in the general vicinity of the Coca Valley Electric, five hundred fifty-eighth Avenue. Iowa Township, just north of Seviwa. Installing new overhead fiber optic line right away. Third, the Coca Valley Electric Cooperative, eighty-third Street, Iowa Township. Directional Board of Fiber Optic Cable in the roadway. That one. McCoke Valley Electric in Van Buren Township, Seventy-fifth Street. Northeast of Preston, directional board of fiber optic cable on Seventy-fifth Streets. Recommend that one. Another McCoke Valley Electric Cooperative Application, eighty-third Street, Iowa Township. Installing a new power line within County right away. With poles, recommend approval. Coca Valley Electric in Iowa Township again, five hundred fiftieth Avenue, installing fiber optic cable. By service in that area to some properties, recommend approval. Coca Valley Electric, five hundred fiftieth and sixty-fourth Street. Five hundred fiftieth Avenue and sixty-fourth Street, installing fiber optic cable in the right of way. Recommended directional board, recommend approval of that one.
I make a motion to approve the Coca Valley right away, utility permit as presented.
Second, one motion in a second. All those in favor? Hi, motion carried.
And the final one is from Windstream Iowa Communications for boring telephone cable on Mill Creek Road to Mr. Shekels residence and we recommend approval of that. That's what it said, for employees telling copper wire, now maybe some broadband on that.
Yes. Motion to approve. Second, a motion in a second to approve the Windstream communications permit. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is Timber City Adventure Race. Chamber of Commerce is putting together the date that they had scheduled, it's June twenty-sixth from seven to two P M. It involves a canoe bike and run race, eight miles, starting at Canton, pulling out at Warrior Town. Fight for fourteen miles from Warrior Town to Line Killens. And then a run five K, three point one miles from the line kills to downtown the Coca. As part of that, they asked us to do some sweeping, make sure that we don't have too much travel on the road. And they also need some street closures on Hurstville Road, which we'd like the board to view and approve. They're looking for a hard closure at sixty-one with barricades and then a soft closure at Rockdale and Hurstville. And that that intersection will be staffed and traffic will be kind of directed around. And if residents need to get up to properties there, they'll be able to, you know. But they'll be warned of the event and the need to go slow and things, but they don't maintain traffic. For that intersection, which was a concern for the change based on previous experience. So we've been talking to Wendy and recommend approval and hope everything goes well.
Yeah, we um.
Done this in the past.
We've done that, asked and in fact Marilyn and I were at the Hurstville Road directing traffic a couple of times. Yeah.
Volunteering.
Yeah.
Wendy would like to add anything to that or?
Hey, we want to have you volunteer again this year, Jack.
So I'll be happy to do that, Wendy.
We are happily accepting volunteers. So no, that that is all. Yes, it's the classic route that they had done for years. So really no major changes there at all. So.
Since you're on the line, I'm going to tell you, I'm 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 happy for you, but I'm really sad that you're leaving the chamber. You've been an excellent director and you'll have a hard time finding somebody that is good to replace you.
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate that. It's a it's been a pleasure. It really has. So I will hopefully still be able to work with you all in some facet in my new role. So.
Sure. But best of luck.
Thank you very much.
So what is the decision of the board?
I would make a motion to approve the closures and sweeping as presented, you want to call it.
Get out there with a broom.
We have one that big road group.
Yes. Do you have a second?
Yep.
We have motion in a second to approve the road closure request. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
The only other item I have is fuel bids. We're looking to send out fuel bids and then have them come back in May twenty-fifth for opening and then again to the board on six ones for award. Cool for that. The process has started for that.
Motion to approve. I would second. Well, they opened in during the meeting. Okay.
Yep, I would second.
So we've got nine A M. Or it's got a different time. Just let us know so we can submit this now.
We have a motion in a second approving the request for bids. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
Alright. Other thing I have is the storm last night, we had one road where we had some water over top of it. Ten Streets, north of town and east of sixty-one and we needed to report the cover. So that's in care of, but otherwise, no.
Well, it did really rain for a while.
Who? Do we know any status yet of when they're going to start to patch it on two fifty?
Oh, they keep calling and kind of pushing it a week out. It's like a week or two out now. What Mike said, you'd have the exact date if you want to stop it.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, I think, you know, we've got a majority of their field work done already.
And the tractor gates come too.
Yeah.
They're not going down to fifty.
No, I don't think.
I have that route somewhere. Yeah. No. What's the story on Class Street the last day? Is it delayed again?
I haven't heard anything. The city hasn't given us updates.
And people ask me.
On what I see in the paper.
Yeah, that's about what I see.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're working utilities.
Yeah, I seen them right down here by the Farm Bureau office this morning. They got a big hole in the ground.
Always takes over time out by.
Yeah.
They've got, they pour up my place and the office.
I was speaking in coverage. Have you looked at the one by my house?
Roger, I asked Roger to do that and see if we can put some rock down just to reduce the entertained velocity of it trying to get us.
This is digging under that big.
Cover.
It's a big, it's like nine foot by twelve foot cover.
It's a good size, man.
With that being said, how's that just on the, I forget the road number down east, northeast of Preston?
Yeah, I got it.
Still close.
Working on it. I see where that's at too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we don't know a date when they're starting that at. Yeah, that looks like a big two.
It's quite a big area.
Yeah, that's amazing. Doesn't look like, looking at the terrain, doesn't look.
No, yeah, but you plug it into the software.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any visitors or citizens at this time that wish to address the board? Hearing or seeing no one, we'll move on to our next item, which is Lisa Smith, county auditor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one board proceedings as written by Deputy Auditor deploy and authorize publication in the official newspaper.
So move second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
I also need a motion to accept and place on file and authorize the chair signature and the county recorders report of these collected for the month of April twenty twenty-one in the amount of fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second, they've been pretty consistent with that.
Yeah, they have been. Yeah.
Yeah.
Which I think is up a little bit.
Yeah.
It is. Usually it's in the upper forties.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Second, we have a motion in a second to approve the recorder's monthly report. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve the publication of the notice of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendment public hearing set for May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at ten A M. In the supervisors boardroom.
Second.
A motion in a second to approve the May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at ten A M. Meeting for budget amendment for the twenty-one year fiscal year. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the chair signature and the certificate of cost allocation plan from Cost Advisory Services. That is part of what I emailed you yesterday so you can see all the paperwork that Jeff Lorenz is is our contact person and I talked to Jeff last week and he has completed that. And I just wanted you to see, you know, what they have done on behalf of Jackson County. It appears that we'll get twenty-four thousand dollars back. Last year we got twenty-six, so it is down just a little bit, but he has done.
That's based on?
They take, take a look at square footage of all the offices and the salaries and what's the percent of, you know, everybody as far as towards that.
Revenue and anything like taxes or anything like that. I mean, are we down maybe a little bit because of pandemic thing too or something? I don't know.
You know, really, I don't know.
It was quite extensive. Yeah.
Yes, I didn't want to print it off.
To get through.
Yeah, so I just need a motion to.
Lots of figures.
Yes.
Both do prove second.
A motion in a second to approve. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
And speaking of flooding. Again, this year we flooded the basement. So they're working this morning in the extension office. I talked to Marty this morning. The extension office got flooded last night in the rains. So in visiting with Marty this morning and with more approval. And I think it's time that we cut out some of the cement parking lot and try and divert the water into the drain instead of towards the courthouse. They put that short, I call it a mean wall, but they put that short wall on top of the cement. And then last, well, was that two weeks ago when it flooded or three maybe now, but they clogged it, but the rain still came in. And so Marty and I talked this morning and instead of him doing this project, I think it's time that we seek bids from cement contractors.
I agree.
Did we not do that last year and didn't get it completed?
Well, last year, last year what we talked about is that we were going to cut out part here close to the to the cement.
And the sidewalk.
Right, and that didn't get done, but this is way over on the other hand. You can see if you go out.
The just past the door that comes into the courtroom.
Yes, that area there.
Yeah, common leans toward the building.
It does.
Uh, do we have that on the agenda, make a motion or just have them go out and get this?
All I'm seeking is just, we need to go out, have some contractors come in.
Yeah.
And let's just take a look at it, see what else everybody thinks and get some estimates as far as the cost.
Yeah, I think that's the right way to go.
And I will tell Marty that also. The other thing that I was in meetings last week. One of the things that we need to get done here is that we are, or I should say you as supervisors, you are in a plan to supervisors district. And we need to appoint a temporary redistricting committee by May fifth.
Right, right.
So I just, you know, last year, it was in two thousand and ten when we last redistricted. And we made an appointment of five people to this temporary redistricting committee. So we need to get that done shortly.
So.
So make some contacts.
Or do we have people? Are they still willing to serve or?
So I will tell you that from the last time that we did this, Connie Jarks, Adam Ryder, Dave Kunsweiler, Chuck Wolf and John Hoff were the five people that were.
And and according to the political affiliation of the board, three of them would be Republicans and two would be Democrats.
That's right.
Anyway, that's what the way I read the rules.
That is correct. Yeah. So I just bring that forward for you to be making some contacts. And and I know that this is seems kind of late notice, but.
So do we contact them again first to see if they want to stay on board?
Well, Connie Jarks is gone.
Right.
She's coming back then this month. But I already, I did talk to one person after that. So I guess you can look at two re- two Democrats. And we'll try to find three Republicans.
Is David willing or have you talked to him?
I have not made any contacts because this is not, this is the appointment from you as the board.
So why don't we just run them same names and see what comes back and then?
Or just give Larry the list and and if you want to touch base.
Yeah, I could do that too.
Okay, I'll do that. And that's all that I have for the board today.
Okay. In that case, Luanne, are you ready?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Alright. At eleven thirty this morning, there is a webinar, a training on motivating different generations in the workplace via Zoom. For any of you that want to attend. Wednesday, May fifth, from eight thirty to eleven is an Isaac Supervisor's Executive Retreat by Zoom for Larry. And also at nine A M. Tomorrow morning, it will be early this time, nine o'clock instead of nine thirty, is an R T A meeting by Zoom for all of you. At twelve thirty tomorrow, so two o'clock is the tour of Jackson County Manufacturing. And from at six P M. Tomorrow night is nine one one service board meeting for Mike. Thursday, May sixth at eleven A M. Is a tag meeting by Zoom for Mike. On Friday, the seventh at seven A M. Is a McCoke Leadership Team meeting for Larry. And at noon that day is a D C A meeting by Zoom for Mike.
So we had a leadership team meeting last.
Will they switch up the dates on me? Okay.
Unless we're having another one, but we just had it.
Okay.
Thought I seen some minutes somewhere else.
Yeah, it could be. My apologies for that. Monday, May tenth at seven thirty is an early childhood Iowa Executive Board meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at nine o'clock and at ten o'clock that morning, he has early childhood Iowa site visits by Zoom. Those are also for Jack. And at one o'clock on Monday is a regional governing board special meeting by Zoom also for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, May eleventh at nine A M. That day, twelve thirty is another early childhood Iowa site visit for Jack. At four o'clock that afternoon is McCoke River Watershed Management Authority Executive Meeting by Zoom for Larry. And at six P M. That evening is a webinar on save, a save your town webinar on restarting local shopping. This is today, I'm looking at Pioneer Cemetery Commission. Looking for a motion to re- three members of the Pioneer, reappoint three members of the Pioneer Cemetery Commission for new three-year terms that will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And that's Jeanette Cruz, Don Wentworth, and Elaine Edwards.
And they all agreed to that?
They have.
We'll move to reappoint as presented.
Second. A motion in a second to reappoint Jeanette Cruz, Don Wentworth and Elaine Edwards. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
I'm also looking to fill a vacancy on that board. With a motion to appoint Gene Kilburg to a a term to expire until thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve. And Gene has been on this board before, is that correct or is it historical?
I think she just went on another board. We're gonna make the historic preservation maybe.
Excellent appointment. I would check on that.
We have a motion in a second to approve Gene Kilburg's appointment. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, motion carried.
That's all I have for this one.
Thanks. Okay. Anythings, while we're waiting, anything on boards and commissions? I think that we had quite a meeting yesterday for the governing board, but I'll wait till Lynn gets here to finish discussing that. We're dealing with children services and so it's some. They went out and they only had one application compact for four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So I read that we had quite a, quite a, quite a debate yesterday and that's why we're having a special meeting next Monday. There was shall we say, quite a division amongst the governing board as to how we need to proceed. So hopefully they'll all have. We're going to be getting some material from Lori to go over so that we can hopefully be prepared for next week.
Would you like Christina to be called down?
Pardon?
Would you like Christina to be called down?
Well, she could if she wanted to. Because Nathan isn't tall. Is Nathan, is Nathan coming in or is he calling in? Do we know? Is he on by chance?
So this children's mental health, what are other states doing with that? Or is it all over the place?
It's all over the place. Some.
I didn't get a chance to watch the last Irish meeting either, Larry. I'd like to watch them just for the, is there any update on the Spruce Creek Water Project? Yeah, they're working up a contract for Bellevue for the water, bulk water setup. So did they get the USDA grant? Did that come through? I know they're. Two of them. Two grants, one for. So they're moving forward with that? Yeah. And I I W is doing some of the easements yet need to be done, but it's, it looks like it's coming fairly soon. See that with a little bit of caution, but.
What did they think that would look weird? Who knows?
Yeah.
Maybe this fall.
Well, I'm sure Nathan's gonna have some interest.
Hopefully this fall.
He had talked about that. He has some interest in that with the park, you know, so it's a. Yeah. That's been a long road to get there. Sure, and certainly the length and I did not get.
Years and years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Have you had a discussion as far as the mobile home park within Spruce Creek? You know, if a decision was made as far as how they'd like to handle that?
They will all be on separate meters, I believe.
And you might want to discuss that with Sarah.
Means a bulk water system just for the trailer. How many trailers?
It's like twenty-two.
Is it room twenty? I thought.
I think there's twenty-two lots.
Yeah.
And see, then we would have the same problem in Spruce Creek that we have at Loser Lake, where you have trailers sitting on loose land.
Is there one in Spruce Creek? Oh, well. That's from. No, it's not leased. It's owned all by the same person, okay?
Then the trailers that are, the trailers that are sitting are not on their land. They're on one, one person's land. So you can have twenty-two trailers sitting on one person's land.
And so as the homeowner.
Yeah, so we could have the same problem there that we have at Loser Lake.
So you mean the renters not paying the water?
That's correct.
It's as simple as that.
So if you, if you bring.
So then the contract says though, that we just renewed or we did, says that the landowners responsible for that, correct?
Well, that's why we.
I think that new contract we just signed says that. Well, there's supposed to be what ninety, ninety-seven hookups?
I just.
Yeah, I think right around a hundred.
Yeah.
Hundred.
That's what I understood. Yeah.
I know that there's been a discussion between Kimberly and Sarah on how to handle that particular situation.
He's a puzzle. I mean, I can see it where it would work to have just one meter for the whole park because the lot rent would be part of the water bill basically. Well, then the landlord would be responsible for it and then he'd have to build.
He would have to, he would have to charge them for their.
And I think that's ways from down now because he's got his well feeds and stuff, so that's.
He must rent that space to them, so he just increase it to cover the cost of the wire.
Chasing somebody down.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be a lot easier. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I would touch base with her to make sure that when that gets put together through Iris, that that's how we're addressing. I know there's a lot of concerns. Some people only, I mean, it's just a summer home and. But there's only a few in there that are compliant. You know. But is for the majority, I mean, they're still going to have a meter on each one. So if they're not there for six months, they're not paid for that, correct? They're going to pay a fee for the. There's a base hook up fee. Right. Right. And you have, I think it's fifteen hundred gallons or maybe three thousand. It varies on which contract you, or which, how it was set up. And that's your minimum, I guess, that you're, you pay for. And if you go over that, you're. Well, I don't, I don't know, Larry. To them people, this is progress and this is, they have to get in compliance or that land that they own is invaluable.
Absolutely.
Period. I mean, it's worth nothing.
Okay, at this time we'll have Christina Tranel come up. Good morning.
Good morning. How's it going? Good. Busy. How are you guys?
Good.
So some updates from the zoning department. There were sixteen zoning permits applied for in the month of April. One building addition, seven were accessory structures, so like porches, decks, sheds, things like that. Three new homes, one principal use like a egg building. One floodplain development application and then two special exceptions and one variance, which are going to be were adjustments on May twenty-fourth. Um, yeah.
Could you email that?
Yeah.
Just to look, yeah, I can't.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Yeah, I can do that. Um, I just put together.
Yeah. It's a three-minute report.
Right. Um, I have nine active nuisance cases as of right now.
Awesome.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, looking at those emails that you sent.
Yeah.
No wonder the people in Green Island are really upset. You know, I've seen some of them in the past.
Oh, I've driven through there. It's just, I don't know what, like driving through a city dump or something. I mean, it's just. That one on the east end is pretty.
Oh, it's awful.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you know, I haven't been down there and looked visually since you sent the picture of the church, but that seems to be better. I mean, looks presentable anyway.
It's a lot better. Yeah, he has cleaned it all up on the outside, kind of making piles to get rid of the different wastes. And then has pure the church building until I guess he comes up with a game plan of exactly what he wants to do.
Is there a game plan?
There is stuff, there's, something is in the works. He is either going to tear it down and rebuild. That is floodplain down there, so I'm having him kind of talk with the T N R, the authorities that he needs to see if that's something that can be accomplished. Or else this is going to be a tear down and nothing rebuilt.
And is there a timeframe to this plan?
Uh, there is not yet a timeframe to this plan, but yeah.
Can we put a timeframe on it at some point?
Yeah, yeah. I believe so because I mean, the, as of right now, it isn't secured entirely from the elements by any means. There's still some open to that.
So is he going to come back with you with what his plan is?
Yes.
And at that point, you can look at that and then decide if you need. And at that point, you can look at that and then decide if you need to put a timeframe?
Exactly, yeah.
Well, do you know the elevation that it needs to be raised for that floodplain?
My understanding is that it's a foot, one foot above the one hundred year floodplain. I don't know what the elevation is there right now in the one hundred year floodplain elevation is yet, um, so I'm not sure, yeah.
If I was to guess, that's one of the lower ones.
I would say too, yeah.
You know, you get further east, I think they give, you know, even to the south, they're higher.
Yeah, let's check one up.
Um, so there's progress has been made on that one, and it's still, um, still underway.
And other ones in Green Island are?
So three letters were sent out last week. I have, um, heard back from one person, uh, who will get some of the stuff cleaned up. And, um, remove some of it and then put it, place a tarp over some of the other materials. As a way, yeah, as a way to mitigate that as a temporary fix, I told him. Um, and as of right now, he's just not in a place where he can build anything, so. Um, but I said, once that, once he is, he should get, I'm gonna approach it, place those items in the shed.
Well. We've done this in the past sometimes, but we need to follow through with it.
We really need to be strict on the timeframe.
Yeah. Okay.
Cause they have been way too patient for too long.
To a point that maybe we need to have a dip or somebody go down and just take a visual look and say, hey, how much would it cost to do? And you could put that in a letter too, and it says, okay, we've had an estimate, and this is what's gonna cost to clean up if you don't do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I imagine we still have to go through the process, so.
Another little tool just to get things moving.
Yeah, maybe get some action.
Yeah.
I did turn into a home inspection T N R as well for open burning violations, so.
Nice job.
Um, yeah, and then, uh, I did four inspections last week, uh, the letters I'm hoping to send out this week too. So those are properties, um, along Caves Road and then Iron Hill. Yes.
Hundred and fifty. Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question. When we get to redistricting, are we gonna need G I S with that? To, to decide what the boundaries are for the congressional districts and for the supervisors' districts and. By according to population, pardon?
At the local level here in Jackson County, the only thing that the temporary redistricting committee really deals with is just the supervisor's district. And that's based on the census.
Mm-hmm, right.
So when the census maps come in, do they come from you?
Uh, I would hope so, yeah.
So we will be working with Christina then to, because you have to make your districts, you have to make your districts all. Based on population even.
So.
Yeah, Christina will be.
Yeah, in my situation, I think my district plan is my road.
Oh, okay.
So hopefully they don't move that, so I end up in a different district.
Well, that's gonna be taken into consideration, and they're gonna have to look.
And what would be the consequence of that if you're in a different district?
I guess.
What, why would that make you different?
You have to live in the district.
You just had to go to a different booth, right?
No.
No.
To live in the district that you represent.
Well, see, when I was, when I was first elected. My district was three quarters of Macocata, Baldwin, and Monmouth. And then north, J C had the other part of Macocata to Sebula.
You're talking about the three, two, right?
Yes, so, well, that's what we are talking about.
I didn't realize that's a district, okay, so, but now it's mostly northern and southern and.
My district, District Two is now an island within District One.
Right.
For District Three.
Yeah.
Yes.
So they'll look at all of the census data to come up with the districts that are distributed by population.
And they're right at six thousand one hundred now.
And then will, will the city be wanting Christina to look at? Or will the cities be wanting her to look at council members, or will they have to do that on their own?
I honestly don't know. I would assume that they will do that on their own.
Okay.
That's just purely an assumption on my part.
Mine too.
Yeah.
I can, uh. Maybe I've moved jobs that I would see if that's on their radar, I guess.
Sure, sure. Cause we've had a couple trainings on it so far, and I'm sure they'll have another one once the census is completed. Because then it'll have to be the congressional and districts as well.
Yeah.
So.
So you know, it's a state redistricting for our state senators and state.
Right.
Representatives and such, and so it, it, this really is a funnel down process. It takes quite a lot. This is just the starting point.
And it's just once every ten years.
But the only one we are responsible for ourselves are the districts for the supervisors.
Yes, they talk about precinct boundaries and such, but that really, I don't anticipate any changes there, so.
So it's a meeting that you sit in on too, Lisa?
I can, sure.
Okay. Um, any, anything else for Christina?
Are you done with your?
Um, I was just gonna talk a little bit more about G I S.
Okay.
A lot to report, uh, just miscellaneous map and data requests. Uh, I was, um, I did set up a training for myself with legal view, uh, there, town attorney, if you've heard of them. Um, I was also gonna send out registration to other staff members if they want a training or update and review how to use that software. Um, and then I was also thinking of setting up, I haven't done any yet, but setting up a training. Uh, to make available to the clerks of cities and small towns in Jackson County, uh, for beacon shakers that they can become a little bit more familiar with how to use that works up as well. And how that can be useful for them.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it's great.
I think they use it quite a bit, yeah, but it's, yeah.
Yeah, I've just been getting some, some questions that are things that I know they would be able to do on their own if they just had.
So we have a, we still have a contract with Beacon, is that correct? Yeah, we still have some sort of, uh, working relationship, no?
Just the contract for.
For the auditor, or for the, such as well.
But the contract that we signed was a short term.
Kind of a transitional thing.
What I was getting at, if you wanted them to do that with you would be.
Yeah, yeah, but I have reached out to them, um, and that's something that they do, they do as a, why.
Well, okay.
So with the G I S thing, I was, I watched the, I had a chance to watch the conservation, last conservation meeting. I know they brought up the water trail thing, and I thought. What, did Nathan contact you or say anything about, would that be something, the water trail system? That they're working on, and they're working on some type of water trail that then.
That should be on the G I S map, or do you know?
I have not.
So I, I was gonna ask him about that, because.
We are, we are redoing the Bridgeport access.
Both of them though, right?
Well, both of them are on the schedule, but not for this year.
Okay, where?
So. Well, maybe Rorotown might, might go to.
I thought Rorotown and Bridgeport was on.
We've got the drawings, we don't have the money.
I wondered about that too, but I've got.
But the one out there, we're having, uh, kind of like come in, move some of the foundation stones from that bridge and create an area where you can come in. Instead of trying to get out in the main channel where it's really fast.
Dangerous for them young kids.
Well, and they're having, um. What's the group?
Make a wish.
Make a wish. Foundation wants to bring a bunch of kids down on the river thing. And that's what we're kind of pushing this up, so we can have a nice quiet pool to take out and then come around below it too. And then take, the bank's fairly steep and pull that bank down so you can walk down there easy. Probably need a couple loads of gravel stuff. It's kind of a temporary fix, but it'll, it'll be a huge safety issue too. I mean, make a lot.
Just Nathan's coming in, you have to play your, right?
Just had an email in front of me, he said he was running behind, he had a blood there.
Oh.
So he's on his one.
I hope that's his own vehicle, not ours.
Yeah, I see another one of ours got hit by a deer.
Really?
No, I would just wanted maybe. Nathan would touch base, but I figured G I S would be involved with the water trail system to map that or however that one.
Was it a sheriff's? My theory is they're out.
I was just gonna say that.
I'm not, I, I, I heard who it was, but I can't remember. I wasn't listening that close, and then I heard sheriff's department, and I thought, oh. Hit by a deer.
I didn't see no report.
Don't think they have guns.
It just happened like yesterday or the day before.
Yeah, don't they carry guns so they can shoot them deer instead of hitting them with their cars?
After they hit them.
Well, Tim Sheen's car was all smashed.
Oh, there he is.
Jim, don't you have a gun? Instead of using your car.
Okay, thank you, Christina.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Unless you wanna listen while I ask him that question.
Um, Chris, did you wanna talk or were you just waiting to see if? Okay.
Looks like a no show.
I would say he's not coming. So you can. Well, you can certainly stay. I have no objections. I just wanted to know. You can stay or whatever, whatever fits your schedule. You can come on up, Nathan. This time we're being joined by Nathan Jones, Jackson County Conservation Director.
Good morning.
Hi, guys.
We're fine, thank you.
I don't wanna interrupt, but I just had a question. I watched conservation meetings, so I had a question on the water trail system and the G I S.
If you had talked to Christine, I was.
I haven't yet. Um, currently, I guess with the water trail, um, we're in the planning process, so we can get those grants.
Yeah.
Eventually, we'll probably be in touch with Christina.
Yeah, I heard it was in the early stages. That's why I thought that would be a good time to.
Get some of that mapping done, so we can have the signage on site, some of that, um, and I not. Put more burden on her. I figured I'd wait and see where we were and what they, what they require for those plans.
Okay.
I think she really enjoyed the challenge.
She likes. Yeah, and I, and I could help.
And you can create that, right?
That point, I, I'm actually pretty good on G I S too, so.
Good.
We can kind of sit together and probably hear all about it, so. Yeah.
I will keep.
Yeah, at some point I'll be in your office.
Okay.
So I think we have a few other things we actually need mapped for the county, um, updated, so. I'm sure there'll be a touch at some point.
If you would email it to us, so I can just book that over, get a better visual.
Okay. Thank you. Just send it to Luanne, and then she can get us copies. Thank you.
So, yeah, I guess on the water trail thing, we're, uh, just kind of an update for you guys. I know Mike saw the meeting. Um, we're in the process of revamp. Everybody says we already have a water trail, which we do. We have new accesses all up and down the Coker River. But to grab that money that the state has enough fund for water trails. To fix our accesses or build ramps, we have to have a plan and follow all their signage and rules and stuff. So we're in the process, um, E C I is kind of spearheading it, cause we had to grant, pay them. Um, they're writing up the plan. They've sent out surveys throughout the county. We sent out surveys to all the landowners along the Maco River here. Um, we just got those back. I haven't had a chance to look through them. But we're just trying to figure out what the citizens of Jackson County feel our water trail needs. For improvement in the future, I guess, so. Um, and things that can help those landowners that are close to our accesses or own land along that river. Cause it isn't uncommon to get a caller late in our office about something going on along the Coker River. Somebody gets out of their canoes and start partying up on their land or something, so we're trying to figure out what our best thing is there. Um, we've met with the sheriff's department and all the fire departments that. Have a portion of the Maco River already, so we're just in that process, trying to get every step in line, so we can write this plan out. And actually fit the state's design and. And that way, when we do go for grants, we actually have a nice drawing up and say, hey, it's in our plan here. We need this money. Can you guys help us out?
So actually, people in Maco, in Jackson County, go to rivers and party? My goodness.
Yeah, yeah.
So it is work in progress, that's what you're saying.
It's work in progress. We're hoping to have that plan done this summer. We're actually, since we have it in the process, we are available for some grants. So we're in the process of putting a grant together for engineering and design on redoing the Bridgeport access. And the Canton access, um, Bridgeport's a very, fairly busy one here, just outside of town. It's steep and it has some very, it's kind of treacherous on the takeout, I would say, so.
Big boulders.
Yep.
You see that when the water's low, and then when I watch it, I thought instantly, I, I've seen these on Big Mill. I mean, several projects, and it's amazing.
Yeah.
But they're going through the N R C S. I mean, they're taking this, this bank goes like this, and it's fifteen feet high. And they're taking that out, and they're putting riprap, and they're putting rock, and they're putting the dirt back on it. And the grass grows, and it stays like that forever. It don't wash out. It, it's unbelievable.
Yeah.
So you can't go through like the N R C S with that?
Well, the problem with that site is it was an E W P project through the N R C S originally, was one of their original ones they did. Before they really knew what was going on or plans, so I think our funding isn't available since it's already spent on the site. So. We're gonna go try to go through the state on that funding, um, where to get engineering. Um, actually, me and Larry and, uh. Kevin says Kevin Kuhman from Maco could hear me out there a couple weeks ago, just trying to figure out a quick fix. Um, the problem with what our quick fix was, I've talked to the D N R, I gotta wait for a state permit back. So I applied for a sovereign's land permit on that, so quick fits, fix with the state sometimes might not be a quick fix to us. Cause it takes a while to, whether we get the permit back or not. Um, we were just gonna pull a little bit of the bank back, put some new rock down, pull some rock out that are in the way for now. Until we can get some engineering, we'll see if we can get that grant. Um, and actually, we, we were hoping to use Alex for our, um, engineering for that. So we're gonna pay the county with grant money to pay Alex to do some design work. And figure out what we can do to fix that access there, and Canton's kind of a busy one too, so we're looking at. Where it doesn't silt in and stuff, so. Yeah, so that, on the back of Alex, um, another thing we got him doing is the trail out of town here. We have one section finally bid out, so if people ask you, it's, it's up to the wetland. Um, working with Dan Trader currently, I've got him some preliminary designs on bridges. We haven't really gotten back and forth too much yet, but we're waiting to see what the bridge will cost and have him place it. So that's the next step. Um, there's a D O T grant out there right now. Hopefully, we can connect the trails, try to work with the landowners between. Um, that might be the tricky process. Couple of them might not want us in there, but we wanna connect that trail to the city of Maco eventually out there, so. Um, that's, that's the next step. So there's some D O T grants that are coming up. There's five million dollars in that. Um, money, and that's COVID relief fund that came to the V O T for trails funds, so hopefully we have a chance at some of that. Um, in the past, those D O T grants are very dependable, impossible to guess. So that's another thing we had Alex working on there.
Does any of that, those funds come back to the R P A, the Regional Planning Authority?
I don't.
Which is through E C I.
I do believe there is a certain percent, and I don't know.
Cause I know we do discuss trails.
Yeah, yeah, there is a little bit. I think that's very.
I didn't know if any of that COVID money would come into that.
I don't know if the COVID, and I'm not. I'm not really familiar with that, all this, cause there's COVID money coming in a whole bunch of spots, and I don't know if anybody really knows what it's for or where it goes or how we.
Well, I asked that yesterday, and what'd you say, the tenth of May, we're supposed to. Get some information on how to spend the COVID. Is that what Shelley said?
We've gotten some emails as far as that the state is going to be giving us some information on the American rest plan with the parameters of the.
I get the money, and then you have to wait, and wait, and wait, and wait. Hope you don't spend it wrong, so you have to pay it back.
Yeah, that's, that makes you nervous. You never know.
Amen.
Um, so I guess I don't know. This one, it sounds like the D O T already has the money. And they always do this grant yearly, but they just have extra on top now, um, compared to. And I know the former director had gone through that grant several times and failed, so I'm not gonna guarantee we'll get it this time either for the same trail project. So there's something there that they don't like. I guess gotta figure out how to put it wording in the grant, but maybe it'll. For the same trail project, so there's something there that they don't like. I guess gotta figure out how to put it wording in the grant, but maybe it'll look better do. So, um, so that's one thing we kinda have Alex doing. Another thing, um, when we got the Packy property donated to us, we had some money come into us. Where there's a pond there that's not, it's too shallow for fishing and so Alex has gone out there. He's gonna get us some just. General engineering on cost of rebuild the dike right below the pond and have a fishing pond.
I thought you approved that already last year when we did that.
So it is, we just are waiting on Alex to get the engineering so we can bid it out. That's another thing. He, he's been on site. I don't know. I haven't talked to him to see if he's found any of the.
And part of that, where the dam is now, they, they dig it out in the center part and bigger, make a big dam down.
Yeah, so the current thing I'm.
It's become like fishing jets.
Might as well make it a fishing jet.
I remember when you guys were talking about that.
Um, that's another thing Alex is kind of doing for us currently. I know, I guess that's an engineering. I don't know if I could figure out how many cubic feet of dirt that takes and. How long the tube is supposed to go through those heights. But so that'd be a good one for that area. Um, as we found out this year, fishing ponds are kind of. They're a big attraction and we also had a almost total fill off at our Packy pond. I was wondering, does it have too much snow on it? For too long, so oxygen levels went. Under, um, we don't have much for fish left in it, but fisheries guy shocked it two weeks ago and they saw two fish. It's not a good thing. Um, so we're working with them. Hopefully they can restock it for us at a cost like down here, at least get us going. With some fish in there.
Well, they wanna.
Look at an aerator type.
Will they wanna dredge it out before they restock it?
Well, and they're not concerned. They said, they said about sixty to seventy percent of the ponds in Eastern Iowa filled off this year. Cause it was an abnormal year where we had so much snow for so long. They said our depth out there is good. It was just the way the winter was. They said that might not happen for another twenty, thirty years looking at that.
Yeah.
So, um, that pond has thirteen, fourteen foot of water in it, so it's got decent. So there's some things to look at there, but they're, they're at least kind of helping us spearhead that one. It's kind of sad because that pond was just getting going and people were fishing it all the time. I do believe they've already stocked fifteen inch catfish in it and stuff, so, um, there's some fish in it that just. It's gonna take some time again to get that going, but.
They might be hesitant to bite her.
We've seen that need, just like our, and I, I was expecting the pond across the open versus the center to kill and it didn't, so. We got lucky there that one, one made it and one didn't, I guess, when you look at it that way. So, um, I don't know. What do you guys call it on, ask about the journey? The other thing we had for Alex this coming year was to look at design and cost estimates on, uh, Spruce Creek ramp and that'll come after July. I don't know how long that'll take them, but we need that so we can go for, I call it marine fuel tax money. They have another name for it when it comes to counties. I guess I'm not used to the name, um, but it's all tax dollars from gas money. To redo that ramp, because currently that ramp goes down and that falls off. So when people back their boats and especially with, and there's a lot of big boats.
But you talked about making that wider and maybe moving that pavilion there that don't.
Yeah, we need to figure out a parking, so. I've got it in my core report asking that we can add parking to that area with the next year of somehow. We don't know how we can do it really to make it most economical, but. My fears are, we already overrun with parking on weekends there. We don't have spots and then. With the new development just south of their offshore, where are we gonna put those boat trailers when they come into town? So we're trying to figure out what, how we can do it. Um, we got it in with the core, asking for. There's a few spots we can maybe do a little maneuver and cut a few trees and add some parking. We don't even have the best car parking for those that have docks in the harbor, so, um, we're waiting back on that. With the core, we're actually getting core inspection on Thursday, so hopefully I can jab them a little bit on that. Project and see if we can get something going on, um, whether they'll let us add parking or figure something out there, so. That's where an engineer at least be able to come in and give us some surveys and tell me what the cost is. I truly just need a cost estimate so I can go for the grant.
Sure.
I could pull a number off my head, but I don't.
I know City Bellevue got one.
Yeah.
When, did Griff help with that too or who?
Scott Gritter's helped.
Or Scotty Gritter.
And he'll help with ours. Um, he just needs a cost estimate to help go with you. I know the one in City Bellevue was three hundred and some thousand, I believe, just for the ramp, so. Open R would keep her in that, but we don't know, so. I think we don't have current to deal with they did there, some of the damn issues, so, um, we'll find out, so.
I, uh, there were a couple of other, you in a hurry?
Nope, I'm not, no.
Um, a couple of other things I took out of that. I know you had talked about the grapple bucket and the stump grinder in the meeting also that maybe we overlooked.
And I think talking to Shelley, it was probably my fault. I didn't catch it when we, she sent back the, it fell out of the, our budget somehow. When it came back to these guys.
But what?
She agrees here.
Yeah, and it was coming out of our forestry fund. So wouldn't it come out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We approved, we approved it.
Yeah.
But I would just wonder, at least they had just given us a ten, a ten month report, so I was wondering about out of this year's yet.
Oh, this come, or out of this budget?
Right now, yeah, so.
Well, we did probably, and out of that fund, we pulled it out of there anytime if we did a budget amendment. So I guess maybe I'll, me and Shelley couldn't see it in there, so.
Well, we didn't cut anything from their budget.
No.
I'd have to pull the book.
The budget she said we didn't have it shown.
We can look at that.
Yeah. And that's not a big deal. I just, that was one thing I kind of noticed. But I think that would, those items would be helpful for us and I don't know, they're not coming out of the general fund. They're coming out of that forestry.
I think you talked about what the derecho did to Blackhawk and I think that's what we talked about.
Yep.
I personally think it's in there.
Okay, well, we'll have to look into it some more, so. Speaking of, but I know you called and asked about, I think I brought up that sprayer, the one meeting that, or the time I was in here. I ordered one for Jeanie to get, so when the spring goes. Um, it's, it's a sixty eight gallon slide in, so it'll fit in the truck or side by side. Whatever she's using at the time and it has a hundred foot of hose, I have like five hundred P S I. So she will hose out and spray spots.
Well, I think that's awesome. I had that on my notes that, uh, hopefully that gets used and, yeah.
Well, no, that's where.
Rose, don't spray Grandma's rose, but she.
I'm more worried about soybeans, because most likely she's gonna be spraying some kind of broadleaf sprayer, so she's gonna. I think it'll be wise, choose sections of ditches each year, work with the landowners that, who else next to it.
Yeah, no doubt.
And that's soybeans and those things. So that's something, at least she has a farming background. She's a farmer and she understands that stuff. She has all the training, so she should be good there. I don't, I don't want any, what else coming to be on that, and trust me, so. I get enough on other.
But that is a, that's a, that's a positive note that this roadside vegetation and there's got to. Sprayer in place and that we've got it and.
Yep, yep, so we haven't received it yet. It's ordered. COVID's got everything.
We may be asking to borrow that company.
I know.
Oh, we took three of them out of the care facility and they were very big. There were these.
Yeah, it's just like.
How many were down the Spring Creek, a hundred and fifty something or something?
Yeah, we have well over a hundred stops there. We just cut another fifteen now. It's also deal that we did this spring, so.
Just makes sense to own your own when you're doing that many.
And I like working with Marty and anybody we can, if they wanna borrow it. I'm all for that. I think it only makes sense to work between.
You like to be good neighbors. What'd you call that?
In Jackson County.
Jackson County.
Yeah, we're all one. That's right.
We all work together.
Yeah.
Do have one more thing that I found really interesting and I didn't know nothing about and I don't know that Jack or Larry mentioned about. And I caught, I caught it during the meeting, something about the trail from the new South Main Bridge. South to like the Dollar Fresh into the bank and to the Walmart and all of a sudden, somebody's gonna throw money at this. And the city had it at their meeting, but we didn't.
Yeah, I, this is kind of fresh to me, um, and I don't know a lot about it. I met with this interim city manager Mallory.
Mallory. We talked about it.
Yeah, she stopped after. And, uh. They, they have money for a certain section of that trail already. It's on.
That's on the.
On the city side.
Yeah.
But there's a section there that I guess falls under county. City limits and they kind of want somebody to co-sponsor or figure out. Um, and help them out with a grant to try to connect it out to that part of the pond. I think what we came through with, just meet with Mallory is, I think it would make sense that we'll co-sponsor, but I'm not. Put off the trail that's not connected before we go for some, to help them with that one. So eventually I think there will be a trail. The city, it sounds like the city support might want quite a bit to go out there towards.
I think it makes sense for that.
Well, and the bank and Dollar Pressure both throwing money into it, because, I mean, they're supposed to have put a sidewalk in. Yeah. And rather than put the sidewalk in, they're gonna donate that money to do the trail.
Yep, so.
Replace the sidewalk.
Yeah, so it sounded like they were already had some match dollars for that one, so. I guess we'll see where this D O T grant for the section north of town goes first and then, uh. There is a few other grants that are gonna be kind of trail stuff, all trail grants. It's crazy. I never knew this until I started getting it. My former job, I didn't work with trails at all, but I guess they're all really crazy competitive.
Oh, absolutely.
You know.
We've been pretty fortunate here in Jackson County, actually.
To get what we've got. So hopefully, I got my fingers crossed we can get that one.
Well, you'd think they would wanna continue what you start, what we've started, so.
It makes.
Well, the parts of people then, we were kind of the. On top of that. Initiative of that and we were kind of the.
Yep, they had that governor back there, so, um, we, we've. Kind of have, I mean, it's still in our grant wood, wood loop plan, so it's in a plan there and it's in another plan. I think it should show that we want to connect it and it's our desire. And it'll get people out of, get, connect those community of Coker to our center for people.
Well, that was amazing the amount of, uh, public money that was poured into that.
Yep.
From the public, you know.
Yeah, and our friends group are currently holding thirty eight thousand dollars for that trail, I believe, right now. So they've done pretty good fun, like they always do. They've done a really good job of fundraising for that project too. So we'll see. We got matched for the second. We'll see where this bridge comes in too, but we should have money for match for that second. Or I call it stage thirty of that trail, because we're gonna have to do three sections of. Originally, uh, my understanding, Daryl was trying to do it all one and that kind of fell off. And price estimates are kind of high on this stage three, because we're gonna have to cut under the road, I think, to make the landowners happy. And it sounds like, just talking now, it says this office had cost estimate was half million dollars for that short section of trail. So that makes it tough. There may be another option. We're looking at another option and see if we can do something.
Let's hope so.
That the bridge is a prefab that's set in place and then poured, is that?
That's my understanding. Larry probably knows, I'm not an engineer, but he sent me plans. It's a, it's a sixty foot prefab bridge. And then they pour. Once it's set in place. Have that delivered and on a semi, the, this isn't a final cost estimate. It was thirty some thousand just for the bridge to be delivered here and then we gotta get it set and poured. So way cheaper than, I don't know if you guys saw the first bid we had. And way cheaper than that, uh, two hundred and sixty thousand dollar bridge or whatever. Um, we had bid on that before, so, um, I think it's our best option if we're going for a bridge. We'll find out, working with Dan, if he thinks it's even feasible. There's a problem with power lines there. Whether he thinks he can get it set or not. He, he said he's communicating with the Coca Valley there the last time. To see when they're gonna be in and or out, because they're actually taking those lines down for a little while this summer, so there may be a chance and.
Hopefully we can hit that window when they take stuff down and set the bridge.
Yep, so that's our, so. On that bridge project, but we can get that connected, so.
Okay, I, I have two things.
Yep.
Who was out there yesterday kayaking? What was it, high school kids or junior high or?
That was McCoke to a fourth graders.
They were having a ball.
So many school groups here lately, I can't, I can't even remember anymore. I wasn't.
I had to go out that way. There must have been fifteen canoes and kids standing along the bank and.
Yeah.
Oh, they were having a ball.
Oh, that's good stuff.
Yes. Second thing is, you said something about wanting to go on a road tour.
Yep, that's a good thing. Um, I know Mike and I talked about this. I haven't mentioned, I figured I'd run into Larry and I haven't. After talking to Mike and Jack, Jack mentioned maybe it'd be best to get all three of you in a van and we go around and see some of our areas, what we got going on. If we could set up a date and time, I think it'd be good to start maybe at Spruce, since we have several big projects on the list there. That probably need it and then we can hop around the county if you guys are up for.
We can do that as a work session type.
I said.
That'd be great.
We've done it on road tours for the secondary roads. There's no reason we can't do it for.
Have you guys?
Yep.
I mean, I drove down there and looked or drove in there, you know, when it was growing up and.
Yeah, so that'd be good. Maybe Spruce, to Packy, South Seville, there's some things like Spruce, the harbor wall needs replaced. We got the boat ramp things. There were some questions on that shower building. Well, we're gonna need a shower building that's steel. We can look the one at Spruce and see how we can cheapen it up for some people, I mean, guys' thoughts. Kind of thing, if we can have a work session, meet together, drive. I don't know what kind of schedule you guys have or what we're excited for that.
I guess, how soon do you wanna do this?
It's, I'm open, um, whatever works best for you three.
You wanna look at your calendar, Luanne, and see if there's some dates that we might be able to do that?
What do we need about morning, nine to twelve or something?
I would say it might take even longer than that.
I'd say just plan the day.
Um, and nothing says we can't come west from Seville or something, putting things over here. I know there's a lot going on with us and some days I have a hard time keeping track of everything we've got going on, so.
Usually, sometimes Thursdays and Fridays aren't so busy for us.
Right now. And the twenty first is clear and the. After mid morning, so the twentieth and twenty first are both good days.
Not the thirteenth to fourteenth?
I have a housing trust meeting on the twentieth, I do.
Right, and Jack has H S till noon on the thirteenth. And then Larry has said the judicial on Friday morning.
And you said the twen- the twentieth and twenty first look good?
Yeah, the twentieth, Mike has a housing trust fund meeting at nine o'clock. And then you have R C D at six thirty, but Friday, there's nothing on Friday, the twenty first.
Do we wanna plan it on Friday the twenty first?
We can sure, sure try that, yeah.
And we can always change it if it. I'll put it online. What time do you think you're starting there? Nineties or something?
That's fine with me. You guys want me to pick you up here at nine or would you wanna? Several of, uh, if we start at Spruce, how do you? I don't know.
It makes no sense for me to come over here.
No.
Cause there, I mean, I don't mind driving down to.
Well, I'll probably finish my day at Spruce.
Oh, yeah.
If you wanted to.
And I'll see what I.
We, you can meet us at Spruce Creek and then. We'll do whatever we need to do. You can drop us off here and then go, if you're gonna go back to Spears Creek. We can, we can figure the, that out.
Yeah, I mean, just maybe.
Just the date and the time.
Maybe even Jack or Larry picked up our van from the center.
Oh, and bring it to Bellevue.
Oh, sure. We can do that, sure. Oh, yes, and you live in Bellevue. You just do that.
Works for me.
Nine AM, I'm gonna put it in here and then.
Well, we'll probably leave here about eight thirty, so we can be over there by nine.
The Van and Road was correct.
Should be.
We took it on the jail floor.
We'll have a, that or the Treburys or something out there.
Officially, we should probably have a motion to go on a road tour with the conservation. Work session.
I would make that motion. For the conservation.
For the twenty first of May. Motion and a second. Motion and a second travel, a road tour with um uh. Nathan on the twenty first of May, starting at nine AM. All those in favor? I, motion carrying.
One thing I wanna add about the water trail thing, and this is what Kevin brought up. Any idea how many people he took down last year?
A thousand.
Nine thousand people went down that river last year on his stuff. And that's not counting other people that just go on their own.
It's it's a beautiful ride.
We have.
Yeah, our family did it.
We have him as a liberally, we got a guy running one out of Savannah that's coming in the spring though, going out of Highway fifty two. Right now, and then we have a few others, but then there's everybody that has their own kayak. It's a busy river, um as long as it stays low, it's it's a pretty.
I know a lot of people get up on at Supple Bridge.
You've got proof that this thing can use and that.
Yep, we need some.
We need improvements here and there.
Yep, so um hopefully, and I think. I think we're gonna get, those grants should be fairly. Attainable, hopefully, so um it's. We'll see, some trail grants, some of it, you just never know, I guess on grants sometimes, so. Um, but I'm really hopeful at least we'll get that engineering area. For the tripwater trail stuff to get the project, you can kind of roll on a couple of things, so we. I guess if I take your time, we did prioritize ten areas, Bridgeport, Canton, one and two. And then we went to Royer Town, the road goes down to that, washes out every time it rains. Some of that stuff, so we we've kind of prioritized down the list. Joinerville's in there, that ramps fall on, starting to fall off, so it just. It just never, I I don't know.
Well, not with the running river.
No, yep, there's no. So we'll we'll figure some of that out as we go forward.
Thank you, Nathan.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
This time we'll be joined by Lynn Bobs, our Jackson County Coordinator of Disability Services.
Good morning.
Who's gonna share all the excitement from our last two meetings.
First one, the last two meetings was pretty routine, the governing board for the month of April. I would say, not real news, really. And I'll let Jack go on the details from yesterday.
He said it was fun.
Oh, yeah, it's a ball.
He said there was conversation.
There was discussion, yes, yeah. Um lively discussion, I guess, to some extent, so, but I am here to report on the April governing board meeting in the mental health region. I would say my recollection was it was pretty routine, but a couple of uh details from that you might be interested in is. You remember David Farmer, the region's fiscal agent out of Scott County, always does a projection. From the point we're at with the report year to date, out to the end of the fiscal year, so his projection on fund balances. Um, puts the region's fund balance at about thirty nine percent if expenditures continue the way they have been, so. We always use that as a uh. Benchmark against what Iowa legislation says that we need to be at forty percent, so we're right about there as a region. As Jackson County, however, our fund balance is around seventy four percent. Projected at the end of this fiscal year, so just two months away, so we will see, I guess. And this whole discussion, of course, is still a little bit. Unclear as to what we will be. Uh, given to manage come July first, because current legislature. Is not finalized any plans related to the mental health funding, in fact. I realized this morning, I Lori hadn't mentioned anything yesterday, and she hasn't said anything for about the last week and a half. Um, if you remember, there's a Senate File five eighty seven, which had some. Property tax conversation and moving. Funding for mental health away from counties or regions into state over a two-year period. The last, I just looked this morning and um. It looks like the current version of any bill is probably Senate File six oh nine, but I didn't look at it, so I don't even know what it includes, if anything, related to the mental health. I don't know if you guys have heard any updates in the last probably week or so, um.
The last update I heard was it didn't think it was going anywhere.
Yeah, that's what I heard. And you know, the the thing that. I wish they would do, I I don't care about the forty percent or the twenty percent, as long as it can. Be the region and not subdivide it with the counties. Cause that's where we are in big problems. If we have to get to twenty or even forty percent, they said, I don't know how we do it, other than.
Sort of after the next fiscal year, the state would come in for a couple of years.
Sure, just say.
Where to set your levy, mental health, if if the current. Property tax process would remain in place as.
Yeah, that's what they would do. Department of Management would come in and say, this is what you levy.
Going on, the children's mental health has just been a disarray, and we're trying to budget for that, and it hasn't happened, and. I mean, how do you?
If you wanna get into yesterday's meeting. One of the 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 main flux of discussion was. Um, about when will we make that decision? And we decided that we were not going to make any decisions on hiring or doing anything. Until after this year's legislative session is over, after the gavel goes for the last time. Because, as we all know. That's when so much of our dilemma has occurred, is that last day. Or the last couple days is when they've passed all this stuff on. After we finalized our budget, and they've come back with programs that we have to implement. So that the that was the discussion yesterday, the other discussion was. Um, do we hire, uh hence send out a request for proposal? Uh, we only, we did that, we got one response back, which I told you about, four hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. And um or. A lot of this, a lot of debate was on a coordinator, um if the coordinator is the answer. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't know how Lynn feels, but as far as I'm concerned. There has to be a coordinator to coordinate the services. Yes, it's five counties, and yes, we have to be able to provide these services. But it's only for one classification of children, those that are seriously. Serious. Emotional disturbed. And you know, I think some of them forget that, it's not for every need that's out there. It's for one category.
What is that number, do we have a estimate? What, the whole region? Yeah, so how many, how many kids?
Well, they said, they said, wasn't it um uh.
Lori said that.
From the the A A.
Yeah, Erin Rome.
Erin, I didn't even say, like, there were like seventy eight thousand kids and.
That's the total number of students, and so that's a dangerous number to put out there, because we don't want people to grab onto that, think that we're talking about that many students.
Right.
What DHS had said, when the children's mental health system was implemented was. You figure somewhere between two and three percent. So that would be the number that. Yeah, and you know, as Jack said. To coordinate.
Two thousand.
Yeah. And this this redesign was never intended, no regions are intended to be the service providers, those providers are already there. The concern is that in the children's system in general, there's a lot of silos. The concern is that do providers to children's services talk to the schools, talk to juvenile court, talk to DHS? And those are all key players in life of a child that's got some challenges. So the idea was that to bring some cohesiveness to all of those players in a child's life. Hence a coordinator. And not even to do case management, not even to be assigned individual families or children, which is also a difference between the adult system. The adult system, you're dealing with adults. So you're dealing with that one person, maybe a court-appointed guardian. In the children's system, obviously, you have the child as your focus, but you're dealing with the entire family dynamics and the family unit. Um, so the coordinator, in my estimation, and I think that's why the job description. A draft of a job description's been developed. Is not going to case manage these cases, they're not gonna have specific families or children on their case load, and they're not gonna be responsible to. Follow every step of that entire child's service history. But rather, there's agencies or other programs that can do that, the coordinator's responsible will make sure that. There is a point of contact for a family to contact if they're not sure where to go next to get the help that their child needs. Um, pull together those different stakeholders and make sure they're all working together in the best interest of children in general. Um, we're required as a region to provide some prevention and education training. So the coordinator would be responsible to ensure that we're meeting that need. There are some services that the region has to make sure are available to children in need. Most of those we already have, outpatient mental health, um crisis stabilization services, well, crisis services, the mobile outreach and all. Couple of services we don't have yet are crisis stabilization beds. That's a costly service, we're still struggling in the adult system to have that be cost-effective for the number of people that are served through beer friendship. At the five-bed crisis stabilization house. But to me, those are the things that would be coordinated by this position.
There there has to be somebody that's in charge of. Making sure that the needs can be met by contacting various. Agencies that provide those services. Um, you can't just hire an entity and say, here, you solve all the problems of the world. You can't do that, but if there are issues that are in McCoketa or are in Tipton or are in Muscatine. Or some of those smaller communities, they have to have somewhere to go. And that coordinator then can direct them to where they can get the services that they need. And that's, that was the big hangup yesterday. I mean, a couple of them just didn't think we needed a coordinator at all, and what good was a coordinator gonna do?
Who sorts it out? Certainly has to be some oversight that they're gonna sort this out somehow in a simple term, say, you know. It's just a big bundle of stuff here. You have a lot of things that they have to oversee.
So we do have the services, it's just how to get.
Right, and we do have gaps in services, but that exists in the adult system too, but that.
With the adult system, you have your pitchers and you have your catchers. And that'd be the same way with the with the youth, but as as we said, it's only those that are seriously emotionally disturbed.
So there's a screening process also that has to go on, and so there's somebody that has to make sure that. People that need to understand how to do the screening process to determine if they fall into that category, that again would be the coordinator.
Seeing with the increase in our in our board, one of the representatives has to represent education, and that's Erin Rome. Who is with the A A. And. I was glad he was there, you know, I I think, you know, it's um, he doesn't often talk a lot. But yesterday, we really needed him to be there, and I'm glad he was there. Because, you know, there are issues that come up and. So far, we haven't, I mean.
We're still, as a management team, we're still. Um, hearing from a couple of board members in the meeting yesterday that they don't understand. The things as Jack understands.
That's the thing that just frustrated me so much yesterday. They were really ridiculing the management team for what they had done so far. And what they had done so far is absolutely essential to what has to happen. And.
And we had two, I I guess I walked away and as you think more about meetings and what did you leave with? The one thing I thought, because there were a couple of people that said, well, the R F P that did go out was vague, or they didn't get it, and as you look at.
And and it 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 almost act, I mean, my feelings were yesterday. I was so frustrated when it was over, my feelings were that some of them thought. Um, Lori had pinpointed who she sent it to.
Yeah.
And that that just infuriated me.
Yeah. So what we had though yesterday, there were two people there that spoke up, that I think. As I thought more about it, this is maybe who the board members that don't understand the role of the coordinator need to listen to what they said, and one was Erin Rome, as Jack said. And that is an agency that I think everybody thought maybe they would submit a bid. To take on the responsibility of managing this coordinator position. Which if we put it out to bid, then we're paying a management fee for somebody to do that too, that's an additional cost, and that not really has come up.
No.
But the board has been concerned about the amount of the management fee, for example, paid to Robert Youngsander over time, understandably so. Um, so he talked about A A's position on this when there's kind of uh criticism of the R F P was floating around. And why didn't anybody local apply, and he said as an agency, they looked at it. It was a good fit for the agency, all the way from the top down, they were in agreement, but then they started looking at different staffing. Identifying who might be a good person to fill that role. Their concern is a workforce shortage, because they create a vacancy within their agency. Of a type of position that's difficult to attract and hire somebody back into. Into that role, so they didn't wanna take that risk, just moving somebody within their organization into this new role. Leaving. An empty spot that they know they're gonna have trouble finding a qualified person to fill, so that was A A's discussion, and I thought that was very helpful.
I did too.
People listen to it. Another one of the people that Jack mentioned, that is now a member of the board, is a provider of services, she's a clinician, a therapist. She was able to articulate that. What this position could do. And again, these are two people that work in the children's system, so if we're gonna place trust in any information we're being given, let's. Place it in the people that are in the system doing the work. So we had two of them yesterday that I thought were really, it was valuable that they were there and that they said what they said. And I think if maybe we can get some of the board members to kind of take what those two people said and think about it, maybe that would help them understand that, yes, there's a need.
Well, I hope, at least yesterday, it. It challenged their mind that there is another way of doing business. They were so close-minded yesterday, I hope they listen to Erin, is and the other, is it Carol?
Jen Cal.
Jen, yes, Jen, um. I I I, by the time the meeting was over, I. Actually, I made the motion to table everything until we could have a work session, which we're gonna have next Monday. And then make take action at our next board meeting, cause I don't think anything would have happened yesterday.
No.
And then, of course, not, and he had another meeting scheduled, but Ken Beck had to leave, and he's chairman. And so Jim Irwin had to take over the meeting as vice chair. And um we just weren't gonna go anywhere.
More, everybody on the same page before you go there.
I I guess at least as a management team member, I wanna get a sense of. They understand the position, because we clearly heard yesterday from one in particular, and maybe even two, I'm not really sure what this is.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure what the need is, do we even need it? And I don't, that's, I think, once we at least. Hopefully can, I don't know what it's gonna be, that we're gonna get them to give them the information they need, because I think it was there yesterday. But um if we at least can get them to make an informed decision. As opposed to sitting there kind of throwing up their hands, saying, I don't, I don't get this, I don't know what it's all about.
Well, we, at least we need to get to the point where the majority of the board understands.
Right, the majority, that may be the goal we have to set, I don't know.
And you know, that's 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 the part was so frustrating to me yesterday, I just kept thinking. Why don't you see this, why do you not understand? That this is the direction we have to go.
Yeah, and there's, yeah, in this position has value, I guess. Um, so as Jack mentioned, there's a work session next Monday again to kind of continue the conversation. In the hopes that the management team can provide some information to the governing board. About what other regions are doing, I know Lori was gonna reach out to the other regions last night. And again, like so many things, I think it's gonna be kind of a combination of of what, how regions have handled it. I don't think there is a real good boilerplate that's a one-size-fits-all for fourteen regions throughout the entire state.
Absolutely, there isn't.
You know, yeah, so um. So that was yesterday's meeting, we'll continue that discussion next Monday. And the only other piece of information I wanted to share from the April um monthly meeting was the usage of the mobile crisis outreach in Jackson County. For the month of April, no March, because we're a month behind, was seven. So that's a pretty good number for our county, and then there were, in addition to that, three telehealth. Assessments that were done through the hospital E D, so we're starting to see some usage of those things. And I think we're starting to see a little bit of collaboration between like the emergency department using or telling a caller to call mobile crisis outreach. As a response to an inquiry that they may have gotten in a phone call. So once we start seeing some of that internal understanding of how those services can benefit and. And how to appropriately refer people to them, um that's forward progress, so.
It's a, it's not really a good thing to say, I'm happy it's getting used.
Right, right.
I mean, I I'm happy that the service is there and the people that need it.
Yes, we're happy that it's available.
Yeah, and I can tell you that I will make phone calls and referrals to a couple of the staff people within the crisis system about situations. And there are other lives that are impacted by the availability of it, but if a person in crisis doesn't wanna accept the service, and it doesn't show up in data as a referral to program. But I am very grateful to have that level of staffing available. In a mere phone call, as far as the situation. When I think back about not having had that for years, this is just a resource that's invaluable.
Have you been in direct? Along in a situation where they have?
No, I've never been in a situation with it, but I've had some detailed conversations with the person. Um that, for example, the jail might call if they have somebody, and the jail is using, I talked to Andrew Long probably about uh three weeks ago or so. They've called um not necessarily mobile crisis, but other people in the crisis system to talk to somebody who's incarcerated. And he said the outcome has been a good outcome, at least at a minimum, the person in the jail doesn't get off the phone and is. Not further advocated or further upset, there's been some resolve to what that person would need. So I see all of that as as good movement. To understand the resources and then being willing to try and access them.
Devil had swore, you wanna say, boy, I'm glad it's getting used.
Yeah, I agree.
No, you would hate, you hate to think you have to need it.
Yes.
But it's there when 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 it is needed.
Yeah, so, so yeah, I think that's the summary, that's about all I was gonna share, because certainly, I think yesterday's meeting kind of superseded.
I'm just so thankful you're where you're at. I really am.
Well, we'll keep trying.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Lynn. Anything else from anybody?
No, I think we talked about some of the questions I had, I, you know, we talked about Irish a little bit. I'd make a motion to adjourn.
A motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
I.
I, motion carried.